Bill, if you hear us?
Yes, sir.
All right, welcome, man. Please rise, face the leg.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd all just bow your head for a moment, please.
Dear God, as in John fourteen twenty-seven, you said, "Peace I leave you, with you, and my peace I give to you." We join in our prayers to those of people in Ukraine who look to the heavens for peace and protection during this time of violence and oppression. And we ask for your mercy that you may change the hearts and minds of those who have chosen the path of destruction. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right, reading and approval minutes from the February twenty-second meeting, please.
Motion to approve and suspend the reading.
Motion by Wolf, second. Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right, approval of the agenda. Any changes or additions to the agenda, please?
Motion to approve as presented.
Take motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Wolf. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right, five A, engineers' report. Jared, what's happening?
Good evening. All right, so, welcome, everybody. I've been here a little while, but just gonna run through our stuff. Got a few things going on. As far as the water project goes, just to remind everybody, we have three contractors on that project. We have a tank contractor, electrical contractor, and we have the underground pipe contractor. The underground pipe contractor has been doing some minor miscellaneous demolition work here in town. Probably taking up a little bit of time from the public works folks. We got John, our inspector, involved, coming up kind of sporadically answering questions. No real updates, just that's the minor work that's going on. We will be getting a construction schedule from the contractors here pretty quick, when they want to start, probably based on things like road restrictions and, you know, things like that. And then we'll kind of kick off the whole construction meetings thing. So I don't know when that's gonna start. Probably beginning of May timeframe, so we're probably about six weeks out for the regular construction meetings. No approvals, something like that. Any questions? No? Okay, all right. As far as, the next thing I have is expedition states. This is a project that was built privately, paid for privately, contractors privately hired, and, you know, as you guys know, there's some problems out there. So as far as we're all concerned, that is moving to the trial soon. And we have been asked a number of questions over the last few weeks from the attorneys on the developer side of what the city of Hazen would, what are the conditions, what's appropriate to correct it, to build. So we spent some time reviewing reports of some of the forensic engineers, the soil boring people, the contractors, looking at televising tapes. In particular, the sewers in bad shape up there, and the plan is to replace it. But the plan and, you know, actually doing it isn't always the same, so we're... We on their behalf in the city of Hazen have basically agreed that the sanitary sewer needs to be replaced, and that's where we sit right now. So I'll look to, I guess, the philosophy to see who's gonna pay for it, who's gonna be responsible for doing it, and that's scheduled later this summer, in August. That's really the only update I have right now is it appears that they're going about it right, that they plan to replace it, and that makes me comfortable, you know, with you guys, because ultimately at the end of it, when they do the final walkthrough, you will own it, and you can't have something that's destroyed. So there hasn't been any fighting about what needs to be done, it's just, who's gonna pay for it?
So Jared, that contractor's not interrupting code any longer. So how does it, who, if, how does it then get replaced? Who does it, not the original contractor, assuming?
They, the developer has gotten quotes from a different contractor, and I think they're using that as their basis for how it, how much it costs to fix it right now.
Is it the entire system, the whole loop up there?
Well, you know, the sanitary sewer is probably about 2,000 feet, and with that, there's probably forty service lines, and over half of them are cracked and broken, so they have to be dug up and fixed. And there's a number of areas where the pipe is doing this. There's squash pipe, and it's really not feasible to spot repair that many spots, so the only feasible way to do it is just dig it up, replace it. It's just, you know, point of no return, where it's too many spots to dig it up. Maybe just be more effective to replace it. The water is unknown until they dig it down and look at it, because we can't televise it, we can't send a camera through the water main. But I would suspect that the water main looks similar. And the way they're looking at it, you know, they agreed that they won't know until they get there, but they've given prices to do both. And I think the way it looks, or what we recommended, was that the onsite engineer make the determination of what needs to be done with the water main once they get down to look at it. It's pretty black and white. If it crosses a certain threshold, the manufacturer recommends replacing it, and that's, so it's not that it's totally opinion-based. It's, I feel, I feel comfortable with making those decisions, I guess, if it comes to that.
Sure.
So that's the only update. Spent some hours on that work, tracked that time separately, but I'm not asking for any approvals. I don't, I think I did bill for some of that time last month, and I guess we will be asking for that approval, and I guess we can bill to track it separately as part of this trial.
Has that affected the houses and the residents in the houses up there, or is it all on the east side of that?
I don't actually know which way the sewer drains. Nothing's collapsed, so it's, it's being used, I guess. Dave, is that, do we have much? It's where we have six places out there? We didn't block it off. I guess if there's sewer running through that subdivision, it's not broken, it's, it's just a matter of, it's in bad shape.
I just was curious if there was any residents calling in the same day, or?
I don't know.
Everything's blown to a spark, I know.
Yeah. So anyway, that's, that's just the update there. I don't think we'll know much unless it gets resolved before August.
So do we recommend those people have backflow preventers?
For water?
For sure.
I don't know if you can.
Oh?
I, 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 that's a plumbing question, I'm not certain of, Jerry. I don't know what, I don't know if you can do a black flow preventer and a...
I just don't want, you know, something to collapse, and then all of a sudden, you know, there are a couple basins.
There aren't more parties than the contractor involved in this. There are also engineering firms and others that are being brought into this. So even if the engineering, or the contractor is no longer in business, there are other sources of potential recovery. So it'll all develop.
Those people that are living up there now, I just don't want any issues for them to... If we can all do anything to help.
If we, if something bad happened, like if it collapsed, we'd be in an emergency situation, then we'd have to make a decision on what to do. Because if it's collapsed, maybe we have to put in a tank for them until it's resolved. I don't know, but that would be something we'd have to figure out. I'm not sure.
After, let us know.
Next thing I have is, so every two years, State Water Commission, or now the Department of Water Resources, puts together their state water plan. And I, two years ago, we put you on the list for two potential projects. These are just planning forms now, they're due at the end of April. So the legislature meets next year, next January, they kind of use the state water plan as a basis for how much they're gonna put in these different pots of money. So two years ago, we put you on the list for a water tower project, or the water reservoir. That's why you got the sixty percent grant for the water tower. And the other thing we put you on the list for was some flood plain improvements, and not really knowing, I think at that time, we were looking at doing a little study or a little drainage ditch type project on the south side of town that kind of never went anywhere, it was kind of a lot of money for just a couple people. But we should continue to fill out planning forms to stay on the water, state water plan. Part of it is you don't know what'll happen, you know, 2023, 2025, we decide we need money. And the state has cost share. They fund projects at fifty, sixty, seventy percent, depending on the category we're in. So an eligible item, for example, might be with your, with the trail project or the indie streets project, you might have to monkey with that levy up there. And so if we have to do some flood control work, you get fifty percent grant to do that. And so for sure, we want to resubmit that planning form for the flood control stuff. We'll just make up a dollar amount. And if you decide that you need money during the next planning, we actually have to apply for it. So it's, it's just you gotta be on the state water plan to be able to use it. So that's one that I would, it's easy, it's a one-page form, you know, but I don't want you guys to just know what's going on here. That, that's a must. The other one is, the thing that they really like to fund is water supply projects. And technically, your water tank is considered a water supply project. If all of a sudden, two years from now, we're putting in a mile of water main because there's subdivision, or there's a, an industry, or, or something is going on where they're requesting the city to build water transmission line, water tower, water, whatever, we can get cost share for it. And right now, it's sixty percent cost share. So I'd kind of like to just make up a theoretical project and just put you on the list for like a million bucks of water main. And then if something happens where an industry wants to set up here, we can help them by using the state's dollars to pay for it. So not imminent, but it's just, it's one of those things that I think would be smart.
Sure. Yeah, it's better to have access and not eat it, than eat it and not have access.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, it's, it's, the other thing I don't know about is water meters. There's, I don't know if they've funded water meter projects before. I think they kind of decide as they go, depending on how much money's coming into the state. But unless, one of the things that's been on your guys' radar for a while, and if we can get any cost share to do water meters, so, it, I don't know. It's, the legislature, legislature will meet next year and look at the needs across the state and then figure out how much money to put in. But I don't know if you want a motion or not, but I'm planning to submit two pre-planning forms, put Monty's name on them, and that's where we had to go to tribes that time and talk about our project down there, our projects. At some point, they'll request you guys, you know, stand up in front of the podium and talk about what the city of Hazen might have coming up in the next planning. You can work with Monty to fill those out.
We can always look at them before the next meeting, or even in one of the April meetings.
Yeah, sure. But I intend to do these two.
Okay, thank you.
And then the last thing is just, I don't think we're ready to make a decision on this yet. Just got, you guys have had some trouble with manholes and in a few areas. There's a company that specializes in manhole rehab. They've come out here and looked at things, and they finally sent a quote to do some work. I think it's three manhole rehabs to seal up a lift station and then do a few other miscellaneous things. The quote's for sixteen thousand bucks, and would it, I was trying to get a map together to kind of sort of locations of it. They rehab things from the inside, and if you dig up and replace a manhole, the time you do the street and the concrete work and all the work, you're probably talking at least sixteen thousand for each one. So it, but it's also, it's not the, it's not the greatest use for small projects either. So they tried to figure out, like, what they could do in a day, and then just put together, or maybe a two-day deal. So you wouldn't want to do just one, because the mobilization will kill you. So they tried to figure out a way to make it work that a while to come out here and do a day's worth of work. I've worked at them before. Rehabbing manholes usually works out good, they warranty their work. If I've ever had trouble with them, they've done and fixed it before. But they'll install a liner inside the manhole with like a ten thousand PSI grout, and then have oxy coated. So it's, it's harder than concrete when they're done with it. And we have a couple manholes that have some broken up inverts, and I'd like to see you do a few of them this summer, and I think then you'd be comfortable doing more of them in the future. But I got, I haven't even talked with Dan about it yet, and I'm guessing we'll talk about it in the future.
Sure.
Jared, I've got a question for you. Is that, is that addressing then the concerns that we saw over by the car wash and then also over by NAPA, where we've had to put quite a bit of attention there?
It's for surely the one manhole by the hub. I'm not, I'm not even sure which other ones we were looking at doing. But that's my intent, Dan, is to get your problem manholes done when they're here.
Okay.
I can do a manhole.
We'll talk about it in more detail, and then we can bring it to a meeting for a hole.
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, any questions for Jared? All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate you being here. All right, five B, Carmen, multi-hazard mitigation plan update.
Yeah, we're doing our five-year. Thank you for having me. It's the only time I get to see everybody again, five years. But anyway, what I want to do is hand out, what I'm doing is what they call the kickoff meeting. So I'm gonna tell you kind of a overall summary of what we're doing for this update, and then what's required of the city. Good. So we, okay, for this update, our multi-hazard mitigation plan is, do anybody else want one? It's a federal, federally required. So if we have a disaster in the community, we need to have this plan in place and updated every five years. And it's basically for the community, the entire community to get together and talk about mitigation. What is going to, what can we do beforehand so that if there is a disaster, then we can lower that chance of, you know, less things get destroyed? And what, on this too, I've got what we did for Hazen five years ago, and I'd like to review that with you. But the requirements of this review is to have at least three meetings with the LEPC, which we had our first meeting January thirteenth, and then our second meeting will be coming up here March twenty-fourth. And I'll get that email out tomorrow. So, and everybody, and what I'm hoping is tonight, we can review your hazards, and then have you guys think about what we've talked about tonight, and then especially with your engineer here, which I'm really glad he's here. And then look at any other things that possibly we can put on this list and work on, to work on. And the reason you put these in here is because they have grants within this mitigation planning committee in it. And if you got them in here, it gives it a higher chance of getting money that the city wants to do that. I know Beulah with their tributary, tributary, they're doing an assessment on that. Well, they're getting that brick grant, I think it's called. Anyway, they're doing it through the mitigation process, and this is, this being up to date is helping them get that. So, and then there's, there's gonna be actually only one public meeting, because the other public meeting is an online survey. And the reason why they're letting us do that is because of COVID. So, and then this one sitting meeting is what's required, but if you guys want me to come back, I can, because I know everybody's busy and to get everybody together, and I need the city councils to be aware of what's going on and get their input. I would come back. What I'd like to see is you guys look at it, and I get a final review, and then at the LEPC meeting, maybe I could get either from Monty or get somebody representing the city to come over to the meeting, and then we can watch your... And what we're gonna look at is the hazards that we've put down five years ago. What did we get done, what's ongoing, and what's something that we want to have? So that's what we want to be thinking about. And that survey, just so everybody knows, should be in the paper this week. Right, Dan?
So, is there an article about it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll, that'll, this week.
This week, yeah. And so then people can go look at this, it's a very short, brief survey. And I did send it to Monty. So if you can forward it to you guys, and then just have you take that. And I made it as brief as possible, but I think it's good and it's to the point. It just gets people thinking and then gets your opinion. What's important to you guys, what isn't important. So, any questions? Okay, so now I want to look at your hazards. So five years ago, Hazen, the first thing, we participate in the National Flood Insurance Program Workshop, Educate Public Benefits of Flood Insurance. And I know that happens like before us last. When we have a year that looks bad, that's when we have that. And I know when we didn't have it before, we always had it over in Beulah, because it was centrally in the county. So that, I believe, is ongoing, and that won't stop. It's just that if we had them, and, and if you feel that you want one, you definitely can put one on. I just don't think people are interested, you can't get people to come to them unless there's a threat. And then there was considering enrolling in that National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System. I don't know, I don't, did you guys ever get into that? I'm assuming you did. Okay, and maybe you did, because I know at the time, you guys were going through a lot of, you were working with FIMON changing your map because of the border of the 200. Okay.
That was in 2010.
Right. Okay, that would be ten years. So this must be ongoing. Okay, and then there was enhancing abandoned rail line west of town to divert or slow down flooding from the northwest. Did we do anything with that?
We talked about it. I'm trying to let Jared refer to it. We haven't taken the action on it.
So are we gonna, are we gonna work on that, or?
I think we've kind of shelved it.
While we're still on the state of water. They probably use some HNGP money to do the study. And then I guess if there was a disaster in the state, they'd maybe consider something to do project.
Yeah.
What's your acronym used for? HNGP.
And that's a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Okay. We're gonna say, we're gonna switch this to a study. And look for grant funding to do that stuff.
That'd be a good kickoff. So there's not enough money to do a project that size, but they will, they'll pay for studies right now. They don't have to fund all the studies unless a big disaster happens a couple years later.
Then they're probably looking at the HNGP program to actually do mitigation projects.
So you should probably be able to do two.
Okay, the next one was continue channel clearance and debris removal programs for the Ninth River and Antelope Creek. Do we do that?
That was a collaboration with the water board, if I remember correctly.
I believe it was, too. So that's ongoing.
There is some snagging about two or three years ago.
Yep.
On Antelope, I remember, I'm not sure about the building, but I...
I thought they, well, you know, I thought they were going to do it on the Ninth River. I don't know. But we're gonna say ongoing. And what I'll do, Monty, is I'm gonna write all the stuff that I get from you guys. I'm gonna send it to you tomorrow, and then you let me know when I missed or if I got it wrong. Okay, and the other one was educate public about the existing community shelters. And that, every summer, we do that, be ongoing. Every summer, I put that in the paper. Okay, and then participate in fire wise education program, molars, implement best practice during the wildfire season. And we do that through the fire department, and then also through, every summer, I do severe weather burn bans, things like that. We put them in the paper. So that will be ongoing. Okay, and then participate in National Flood Insurance Program training. Yes. So is there anything we need to add?
Generators?
Oh, yeah.
We have six lift stations, and we use permanent generators.
And you want, okay, so you want permanent, not mobile?
Whatever they pay for, I guess.
Mobile are easier.
Yeah, mobile would be fine. Yeah, then you have to, you know, keep them on one or whatever, put them inside.
And you're looking at six. Tell you what, I, I believe every fall, they come out with people, they can apply for that. So as soon as I, I'll go find out, and I'll let you know. And you want me to work with Dave?
That'd be great.
Because I know other towns that, that they've got generators. But mobiles are easiest to get. Okay, is there anything else?
Do you mind if we have one lift station that may be a little susceptible to flooding?
Does that station have any flooding, or is that a ball? I don't want her to get close to it, you know, or whatever. I wonder when the water came up, and had the debris close to that bank, and it was going in. Very bad, I feel.
Yeah, did they get sandbaked, did you get sandbaked there?
I don't know if they did or not, did we sandbake them or not? Did sandbake it. It was close, it was maybe like twenty or thirty feet from the building.
That's what I found.
Maybe you had a wind base.
So what you're looking at is something to permanently put in there that would stop the flooding beside, after the sandbait?
I don't know. Might be the new lift station, might be that we just beef it up, maybe we have to raise it. I, I don't know. Something, because the lift station is adjacent to a water main.
So what you want to do is look at it to see what would be the best way to make it benefit the public. Best options?
Ultimately, to do a flood risk reduction type of project, which we don't know what it is yet, but we can call it that. We call that a special station one, for station one flood risk reduction project.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, but think about it. And then once we get this information, then we get it down on the twenty-fourth, then what I'm doing is sending all the information, I'm working with K L J on this, and then they're gonna get a draft plan. Then once I get that draft plan, I'm gonna email it to Monty, to email to you guys to review. And then we still have another chance to think of any other projects that we want to put into it. And then I am gonna have a public meeting. Yes, we have food, we'll have to have a, we'll get them there. Somebody, I'll get somebody there. And then we can, you know what I forgot? Would you guys sign this, so that I have a roster, and there's a pen there attached? And then that way, I've got proof that I met with you guys. Okay, but yeah, we'll have to have one public meeting, and that's where I'm gonna thoroughly go through that plan with everybody and make them understand, and they get feedback from the public. And then after that, once we're happy with what we have, and we made all that... And then after that, once we're happy with what we have and we made all the updates, then it goes to state and then it goes to FEMA for approval. And then once it's approved, then I'll bring it back and you guys, all you have to do is adopt it with a resolution. And then we're good for five days. But that thing is, it is an ongoing plan. So every year, we can come up with something else. We should review it every year. And then if you think of, you know, any kind of projects, then we go through the guys at state with the mitigation funds. And they're really good. They're really good about helping us with this application and stuff. So is there anything, any other questions? I'm glad you're here though. Like the engineer. Good guy. If I get your signatures, then I'll leave and send Monty an email tomorrow.
Carmen, how often are you updating the fire risk levels right now? Or is that something that for burn bans and whatnot?
Right now, all the burn bans as of the end of the year, December, are off. The state always cancels them all. So when we decide, because that's the other thing we're going to probably talk about at the LTC meeting, what people, you know, how the fire chief's feeling about it. And if you guys ever do feel there should be something, give me a call. Let me know. Because that's something that, you know, then I go back to the fire chiefs, I go to the law enforcement saying, hey, what do you guys think? Because Yagel is very, very proud. But we're hoping for spring rains. But we were going to talk about it. But, you know, if the fire chiefs want you to, they usually email me. Just take the meetings and get that in place. Just let me know and we can put it, you know, right away.
So he's in bay. Is that your authority or is that the corps that sets those burn bans and limits?
No. Our county.
It's the county. No matter what. All right.
Because they only have a shoreline.
Okay. Okay. And then you know, just keep that up and I'm not sure.
Yeah, Mercer County, the county commission would set. I get the input from the fire chiefs, the law enforcement, and then I give it to the commission and they're the ones who makes the decision and they're the authority. But yeah, I'm hoping for spring rains and we don't... Awesome. Thank you, Monty. Thank you very much, you guys.
Yeah, thanks for being here, Carmen. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to five C, active shooter employee policy. A second reading, possibly approval. So any other changes that anybody sees that? Over to approve. Thank you. Motion by Stern?
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. Roll call.
Stern.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Miller. Paul Manau.
Hi. Motion carried, thank you. Five D, temporary COVID policy to update or rescind. And I know that Monty and I just briefly talked about this, but with the new CDC recommendations, which seem to change frequently, there is now the five days is recommended to return to workplace and not ten like we have stated in our policy handbook. So do we want to just try to stay current? And have Monty keep it current as much as possible? Since it's our policy handbook now, it's ten days. Do we need to make a motion, Pat, to change that to five days to be in coordination with CDC guidelines? Does it matter?
Since it's been down to be the best option.
Does it change every month?
Is there a way we could make a motion where if it does change, we have the authority to have Monty change that? Can we make that in the motion?
We couldn't have the motion to be current with CDC.
Current with CDC requirements. So...
Okay, motion by Hack. Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call. When you're ready.
Hack.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Miller. Hi. Paul Manau.
Hi. Motion carried, thank you. Moving on to six A, Chalk Fest Two. Lauren and Bill Wagner's here for backup. Without his present shotgun.
He's going to remind me what I forgot to say. So thank you, Bill. I'm here on behalf of the Hazen Chalk Fest Committee. Last year, we had wonderfully successfully, and I think all of you were attended. And so thank you for that. We had some help from a few of you guys putting the tent up. We'll need you again this year. So Chalk Fest this year is August 17th and 18th. So it's two days instead of one. It was unsuccessful last year. We just decided to go for it. We'll have ten chalk artists instead of six. So it'll be another two-day festival of music and food and chalk art. Last year, we think we probably had 400 people who came and went. We said about 200 or so people. Had a big community meal. We'll have two big community supper down, all of us in Heritage Park. So we'll come to you a little bit closer to the event. We're going to block off the street. We had a main street from Joydale to the end. We had a closer two days instead of one. I think the thing, the workaround that we had to do was with the people in the Pioneer Apartments. And I think we kind of found a way to make those people at the back. And so I think it all worked out just great. So two days. Then, and the schedule is, will also include some special time with kids. And still be a lot like last year, only bigger. So but one of the things that I wanted to tell you about was, if you recall, last year, the chalk artist did a really beautiful portrait of Bonnie Johnson. You know, just kind of a memorial to her. So this year, we're going to continue that theme. But the portrait that we do will not be on the street. It will be on a large, I don't know how large, horizontal wood thing. We're going to have the chalk art done and then we'll be able to raise it up and display it in the park. And the subject of this year's mural will be Tiger Lily. And so we just kind of want to honor those girls. I'm sure everyone here is thrilled with Tiger Lily and so we had hoped to kind of tie it with a performance by Tiger Lily. But they got, it'd be such a big deal, we didn't go, we could really make that happen around the park without kind of limiting space and stuff. So anyway, and then while I'm on the topic of Tiger Lily, because our committee has sort of taken a role of helping foster the arts and support the arts in the community, we are also going to be rehabbing the Al Jarrett's World's Fastest Man billboard out there on the west end of town. It's gotten to be a little bit faded and, you know, it could use an update. But so instead of it being about World's Fastest Man, it's going to say Proud Hometown of TigerLily.com with a beautiful rendition of the typical. And just so people can drive by and go, oh, you know, I think Tiger Lily's got to be big enough so that people will understand who she, who they are. So it's kind of a little bit of a departure for the committee, but we felt, I think, it was a great opportunity to promote Tiger Lily. So a lot is going to be going on and we'll be coming to you for help and support from the city and mowing and, you know, setting up things and park benches and picnic tables and all of that. So we appreciate, we appreciate your help. So Bill, just one thing.
With the Al Jarrett's sign, the intent would be to move that out closer to the airport in the vicinity of that sign that says Al Jarrett's Airport. We would take that sign on the west side of town, redo it and move it out there. So it wouldn't be just, you know, getting rid of the World's Fastest Man sign.
So my question is, as a city of Hazen, this is a very small committee making this decision for all of us. Has there been a survey to find out if we want? If everybody wants Tiger Lily to be the face of Hazen? I mean, not that I'm saying we shouldn't, but there's what, ten of you on the committee, twelve of you? And you're deciding that we don't want Al Jarrett's anymore as our face of Hazen, North Dakota? And it's going to be Tiger Lily? I don't know if I agree with that. As just a, here you go, this is what we're going to do and you can like it or not. You know what I mean?
I'm sorry for a few...
No, it's, I'm just saying, you guys are deciding that we don't want Al Jarrett's to represent us anymore. It's going to be out at the airport and it's going to be Tiger Lily. So in five years, are you going to change it again when somebody else does something? Or, you know, you know what I mean? I mean, I wasn't asked if I wanted Tiger Lily to be the face of Hazen, North Dakota. And I'm not saying that I don't. But I'm saying nobody was asked in this community.
Well, it's been way hard to necessarily find a consensus. I think that the thinking was that the sign itself of Eric Allen getting faded and, you know, and the specific money for that. So we just kind of a chance to do something new and different. And I guess if there's, you know, if you feel like we need to...
I'm just, you know, was anybody asked outside of the committee that they wanted to have this change made?
Well, I understand that you're requesting this to be...
Well, it kind of sounded like it's a done deal.
No, we have to...
No, but she kind of said it was kind of, this is what's going to happen, is we're going to move that sign and we're going to put Tiger Lily there. We're going to come to you for money. And so I'm just asking, that's how it sounded to me. Maybe I'm wrong. But I'm being basically being told that it's going to change. And, you know...
Originally, the Al Jarrett's sign was a private venture. I don't think any city was ever involved in that one.
But it had to be approved by the city?
Yeah, that might be. I wouldn't be putting that...
We did approve it. And we have put money towards repairs. Numerous repairs.
And I think, do our guys clean it up?
Our guys would love to take care of it.
Yeah, cut down the branches and...
Throw it all to take care of the light poles and that kind of stuff, yeah. Replace the lights.
It's just a question, you know?
Well, I guess, I guess I was thinking that, you know, this, obviously, if they came and said, we want to put Duck up there, no matter what it is, we have to approve it.
Okay, absolutely.
It's not, it's not, they're not being, I hope you're not being presumptuous, thinking, put whatever you want, obviously. So that's one of those things where I think just, this is the first we've heard of it. So how big is the sign we're looking at doing? Is it the color? Are you going to have a mural here and then something separate up there?
Yeah, the mural itself would just be, you know, over a acre. Something that wouldn't last very long, but as long as the artists are doing what we want, we'd be fine with not having to disappear on the tree in the rain. So we want to just raise that up in the park and enjoy that for a while. So, and I guess we, you know, maybe we've gotten a little bit carried away, but we felt like, you know, we're so proud to have the Tiger Lily connection and they have gotten to be big. This might just be nicely put both things together. So, you know, how do you want it to seem?
Well, I want to be, I want to be very clear, Lauren, with your group, that I'm one of your biggest cheerleaders. You guys have been phenomenal in our community, what you've been doing. It's been awesome. And I, onward please, continue with what you're doing. So don't think that we're against that process at all. We won't. It's awesome what is happening at this park. And you guys have been a ramrod with that. So I appreciate that. I think we just, Nancy and I just kind of feel like we just kind of, first I heard of it this morning and now this evening. And I think we just need to digest a little bit more. One of the things about the Al Jarrett's sign that we've had up here, which, I love the sign and I love who he, how he represents our community, but it's not been the best structure out there. And we've talked about this a few times, Dave and Monty and the guys that, you know, the guy wires and the flags getting wrapped up and we've had to have three car just welded a couple of times to fix it. You know, maybe there's another spot or maybe this will be smaller where it won't catch as much wind. So, or maybe do some where it's structurally a better structure along the way for something like that. I don't know, but...
Yeah, we talked about looking at the structure itself and seeing how it shakes and does it need a rebuild? One of the things about the Al Jarrett's sign, we talked a little bit more this morning. Maybe it needs to be out by the regional airport building. The sign itself is so wordy. It's kind of, for me, I think, when I look at it, trying to imagine, I'm just looking at it for the first time, it's really hard to figure out what that sign is saying when you drive by by seconds. So we talked about maybe it needs to be kind of a more clearer message about what this guy is.
Right, right. So I think we just need to get some appreciation from you guys about size and how it's going to be put up and things like that. So have we talked about that yet, Bill or...
No, no. And the reason why we're at night is just kind of saying, this is what we're thinking about. We want you guys to be on board, to be on the same page. And your questions are valid, there's no doubt about that. If we have some kind of consensus through you guys that that isn't a good idea, then, you know, we can rethink that. We're in preliminary planning stages too. And we do have a good deal of time before middle of August, you know?
Let me back up, or are we having a concert by Tiger Lily?
No.
No. I know you said the venue wasn't big enough, but...
We have talked about bringing them here and made contact with them. Talked about raising, I think they need about $7,000 to do a concert. So that was a little bit, you know, not out of reach, but more of the concern was, well, you know, they have gotten to the point where would you expect 3,000 people to show up? Or, you know, we just have no idea. And we just thought for the venue that we have and what we have to be putting on, maybe that's kind of out of our reach. We thought it would be great if there would be some group in the community, the Chamber or, you know, whole firm Tiger Lily, you know?
I think it'd be more CBD than, yeah, more quick travel.
And then we would be willing to, you know, help, but we just, we don't have the right opportunity.
We do have air hurt country.
We do have air hurt country, yeah. Maybe we need a billboard of those guys.
We've got the SC meter locked in. Several of those that we've talked to, we're waiting for some feedback from whether or not some groups have become that little blue stench group out of Eldon. We've got Chris Kipko, our biz Mark, coming up. She'll work with kids. She, I don't know if any of you have seen her, but she does a great little program with kids where she works with the kids and then does a song pertaining to what she's, the little educational effect thing she's done with them. She's, she'll be good.
And those will be during those two days?
Yeah, all that's during those two days.
Dan Miller, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. Monty, if we are entertaining ideas or having discussions on any of those signs representing the city or on any of the city properties and stuff, does it move us to have an open forum? Have our colleagues welcoming the public to give feedback and stuff like that? That way we are, you know, involving more than maybe just some of the smaller committees and stuff?
That's always an option, yeah.
And again, I don't, I don't think it's trying to put a stop to anything, but, you know, these are...
And again, I don't, I don't think it's trying to put a stop to anything, but, you know, these are, these are things that are representing the entire community. We live in a world where some things may not be in the free member world, or this would just afford the opportunity to make sure that we're not, we're not doing anything that might be harmful or something.
It's sad when it comes down to that sometimes, but you're right, man.
Well, have you thought about, you know, would you like to proceed, and, you know, I think we're, obviously, we'll go ahead with the event, you know, that's the other way, and Nancy, have you ever thought about how it's like to critique more about this idea?
Well, since it's just brought up to us now, I'd like to talk to people in the community, get some feedback. Because I know we have a lot of Tiger Lily fans, and, you know, have you asked Tiger Lily, do they want a picture of themselves in front of the city?
We're all talking to them.
Okay, is it, I mean, is that a, is that a, where they have a copyright on it? Do you have to pay a copyright fee to put their picture up, because they are, you know? I don't know, well, you know?
I might have to look through their agents.
Yeah, yeah, you know, but I would like to have more community involvement, find out what people think.
I like what Dan Pillar said, if we, you know, made sure he could put it in, that'd be more than, in two weeks from now, we're gonna have some public input.
Valid question, a valid question, since you're dealing with agents, and they're hometown girls. Do they have money to throw at this project? So, it's a good, it's a valid question to them, really. Maybe, maybe they're like, no, we don't want our face in Hazen, I don't know, you know, you don't know. Well, they're always bringing up Hazen, though.
Oh, yeah. They do, and, yeah, they do.
I think, yeah. Well, if you think that, you know, maybe Dan will have something in the paper, or maybe we could, you know, talk about this a little bit more, and invite people to come down here, or take it on the paper, if we're gonna put it on the agenda and see. Would you guys feel?
Absolutely.
And maybe in a couple of weeks, we could, you know, have the time to look at the sign, and, you know, some kind of ballpark cost with you then, I mean, we're prepared to raise the money and make that a contribution.
How big is the, is it about six by ten, is that what that one out there is nowadays? If there's not any quality, why?
I wouldn't say it was big.
And maybe something, you're looking at something smaller, I don't know.
I don't know, you know, when you, when, people only have a couple of seconds to absorb the message, it can't be, you know, how far off the highway is that one, would you say? Thirty-five, forty-five?
About eighty, just over eighty.
Too wordy either, I've seen that so often with some of the other, like, some of the church signs, you can't read that when you're waiting by a forty-five mile an hour.
Well, okay, if you're amenable, then we'll come back in two weeks.
Casey, I would just like to see, I guess, what it's gonna look like, you know, it's too, it's a drawing, you know, I guess, if it's gonna have, I guess, a website on there, I'm not so sure if we're gonna want that on there. Well, right now, the city signs, it does, we have, you know, Hazen. Oh, yeah. We're gonna have Tiger Lily. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'd love to see if, approve what it looks like first.
You know, we wouldn't have any final design, but we could maybe give you a rough idea of what kind of we need or whatnot.
Yeah, more, just visit more about that, that'd be great, but other than the, the August seventeenth and eighteenth for Chalk Fest two, I think, awesome.
Move the music, fine. Oh, and there will be performances on the musical instruments again, both days, probably fifteen minutes or so. Chris Harvey has agreed to set that up and arrange it again.
Okay. All right, anything else? Okay, thank you. See you in a couple of weeks.
Thanks, guys.
Reports, Water Steward.
Nothing to report at this time.
Streets Cemetery.
Going, David, I talked briefly, you heard a couple hours ago, we're still working on moving water, it has helped to freeze a little bit and slow the water, or the existing water is taking its own path. There's a couple areas that we've busted through.
Yeah, we're gonna get this low slowly, helping with it, make sure we can actually get this low on the curve. All the areas we were on, yeah.
It's that time of year.
It's just that time of year. It's kind of odd here with the way she do it, we're gonna get some of the flow for a while.
And on the third avenue, is it third avenue? The hubway, that third avenue?
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys noticed the barriers, the ways down the street, that's all on the president's side, they have a sewer.
Sewer, right, problem, yeah.
So, it's not, not at our cost.
Does it break?
Yeah.
Does pipe separation or whatever, so we have to cut the street for it to do their repairs.
So, that'll be all there, right?
Does that back up into the house, too?
I don't know if it did or not.
Okay, for sure, mine was, is it on our dial or your dial?
You know? Brulee with tar and oil for crack seal.
Haven't relocated any of the, what, what's the company has leftovers for us? It's time, I've made a couple of phone calls or whatever, but nothing yet.
Yeah, like I said, if we have to buy those blocks to melt down, are they even available?
We have, I saw like the state had some shortage last year, or whatever, some of the guys I talked to, said they don't have enough for themselves. Obviously, block wise, probably could be shorted down then too, it's all the same, they just have to procure it all. The grants would be nice and wide. It's nice to see them close up just a little bit before that goes away, just runs all the way through and leaving nothing. We're trying to come up with a plan if we can't get enough car to probably pick on some of the higher traffic streets or whatever to do, and once they get the heaviest traffic, the heaviest load or whatever, and do them, we have to do those certain sections, we'll do it that way.
And what phase are we in next door to tear that thing apart?
We're getting close to where they're gonna have to figure out how to get the sand media out of their tanks, and they got a lot of the plumbing and electric a lot of this. Or I'll run these guys over after the meeting, and get some heads up with them on what needs to be done next, or whatever, all that part for what the model.
Perfect, cool, thank you. Finance, Buster, Library. Police, Fire, Forest Street.
Nothing at this time.
Buster, HCD.
We're continuing to work on the grant process, you know, it's a big, a big one that we're working on, is enough for gas, trying to get enough gas to rush around. So, that application needs to go in on the, by the thirty-first of the month, and the hope is, is that it will get again before then, you know, at least week before. Pretty lengthy again, you know, in terms of, okay, yeah, we do have some. I would say pretty important meetings coming up now in terms of, you know, I might output some future feasibility of the project, yeah, I don't wanna save too much.
Do we have full tenants out west in that building, or do we still have a spot?
Well, while we, we're remodeling one spot, but I think by the, at the end of the month, we'll lose one.
I hope, really? Well, I know Internet's looking for places, so I'm kind of, it seems like for office space, and people are, you know, we're short of that sector in town right now.
Yeah, and I keep wondering if we're losing, would make for some really good office space.
All right, Correspondence Letter from Raff Meyer. Ten A, Monty?
Usual letter with them letting, just stating that we provided all the documents and information they needed, their own banking lawsuits and all that stuff.
No?
Then it doesn't interest you.
So, it should be a motion.
Okay, we need a motion to accept this letter from Raff Meyer. Take motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf. Aye, Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye, Hiller.
I, Coleman Owen.
Aye, motion carried. Do you believe it?
Now we're taking next door, that way they can...
All right, sounds good.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thanks for being here. Eleven A, Transit Administrator Position Posting.
As Casey reported at the last meeting, it has submitted a resignation, the fact that they put one there. As I gave it in the notes, do you want to post this position in-house first, see if there's interest? Or do you want to post it in-house and external, that's the same thing?
I guess I'd just like to say, because we got some, you know, as I've now, we got some time. You know, so, so, we're to post, you know, post in-house first, which is, that's what we did. Yeah, just because if we post in-house, doesn't mean we have to hire them within, for, that gives a, for staff, for your job, I'm like, yeah, so...
Is this, I thought it was a full-time position.
It's always been classified as a part.
Peg just worked a lot of hours.
Well, if we're looking at adding some extra stuff, is that gonna create more than we're part of, like the World's Fastest?
I don't think so. I don't, I guess, we've been discussing more with the business board and more and more.
Well, I guess one thing I know that, one thing that's kind of like, I guess, back and forth, was the grant writing and stuff, you know, that would maybe amend, you know, more to as well, so... So, I mean, I don't know if that would, you know, that would be, I mean, just then, you know, they're having a whole kind of job mixed with that as well, you know?
Basically, yeah, the grant, if you sit down for a month, you can do a grant a couple hours a day over the month, and get it done, so... Really adding the grant writing as part of the duties doesn't increase, it's the day-to-day stuff that pays more time.
So, we agree, okay, we're good first?
I don't know, we'll post for this.
Peg, thank you very much for your time and service, appreciate it, how many years was it?
I needed to have Monty with us, I know it's over thirty.
Over thirty? Well, it's more than thirty years ago, and you helped teach me reading in fourth period. Because I was stubborn.
I have a lot of second generation to them.
And did a good job on the future.
Yeah, right, you did. Down to thirteen, any public comment? That takes us down to approval bills. Who's approved the bills? A motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Wolf. Discussion. Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hiller.
I, Hack.
Aye, Coleman Owen.
Aye, motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, Dan, for being on.